Um, yes. Um, yes. Yeah, basically. Still waiting on that. It's not really that. Okay, this is our pledge of allegiance. I have.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Please call the roll.
Mayor Delacqua.
Here.
Director Law Pignatello.
Here.
Councilman at large Bicker.
Here.
Councilman at large Crannick.
Here.
Councilman at large Traffus.
Here.
Board one Councilman Biassiata.
Here.
Board two Councilman Frondor.
Here.
Board three Councilman Kukrow.
Here.
Board four Councilman Petro.
Here.
Director of Public Service and Properties LaBeach.
Here.
Field Commissioner Morrow, Engineer Collins.
Here. We'll begin with the reading and disposal of the journal, meeting minutes of the public hearing held March 2nd, 2017.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
Having read the minutes of the public hearing held on March 2nd, 2017, I find no errors or omissions, therefore I move that they be approved as printed.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Minutes from the public hearing held March 2nd, 2017 have been approved. Moving on to the minutes of the special counsel meeting held March 2nd, 2017.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I would like to amend the minutes of the special counsel meeting held March 2nd, page seven, under Mr. Councilman Biassiata's statement, second paragraph, second sentence. It currently reads 2.5 million. I would like to have that revised to to the tune of a half million rather than the 2.5 million.
I second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Minutes for the special counsel meeting held March 2nd have been amended. Is there a further motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
Having amended the special counsel meeting minutes held March 2nd, I find no errors or omissions, and therefore I move that they be approved as printed.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Oh, I'm wrong, second. Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
The amended minutes of the special counsel meeting held March 2nd, 2017 have been approved. There were no submissions for tonight's consent agenda. Are there any resolutions of commendation?
There are none.
Reports of committees, the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee last met on March 20th. Those meeting minutes are filed with a clerk, and the next meeting will be held on April 17th. Public Works Committee, Councilman Petro.
Chairman, our next meeting is April 3rd.
Thank you, Councilman. Community Services Committee, Councilman Bicker.
Mr. President, our last meeting was March 6th. Minutes are on file with the clerk. Our next meeting is April 3rd.
Thank you. Police and Safety, Councilman Crannick.
Yes, Mr. President, the last meeting of the Police and Safety Committee was on March 20th. The minutes are forthcoming. The next meeting is scheduled for April 17th.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Councilman Kukrow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was on March 20th, and the next meeting is April 17th.
Thank you. Rules, Ordinances, and Ethics, Councilman Biassiata.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next meeting will be on April 3rd. All minutes are on file.
Thank you. Finance, Civil Service, and Personnel, Councilman Frondor.
Yes, Mr. President, our last meeting was held on March 20th. Our next meeting will be held on April 3rd, and the minutes are on file with the clerk.
Thank you. Are there any appointments and confirmations this evening?
Uh, not this evening.
Communications, petitions, and claims?
There are none.
Counsel will now be open to the audience on legislation only. If you have any comments regarding anything on our agenda, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Tom Jarris, 224 Crescent Ridge Drive, Seven Hills, Ohio, United States of America. Number six, a humdinger. That's a resolution that really should set some kind of standard for democracy in this entire country. You guys have appointed yourselves the judge and jury in a matter where you are the accuser. Document I got from Mr. DeChiro says, "The city of Seven Hills City Council, the city of Seven Hills, some of you drive blah blah, petitioner." So petitioner or accuser, either way. And then it's Thomas Jarris in my address as respondent, for people to understand what's going on. But the idea of the accuser also being the judge and jury, anybody up there have a problem with this concept? This is a democracy, not a totalitarian government. Anybody that votes for that thing is voting against the basic principles this country was built on. Democracy. And I know you all do the family thing, and you take the votes, and everybody's got to stick up for the family. You'll be voting against democracy in no uncertain terms. That's what you're doing. The accuser gets to be the judge and jury. What the hell's the matter with you guys? Who wrote that garbage? Thank you.
Are there any further comments? Moving on to ordinances and resolutions, ordinance number 30, 2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I move that we table ordinance 30-2017.
I'll second a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 30, 2017 has been tabled. Moving on to amended ordinance number 31, 2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Crannick.
I move that we read amended ordinance number 31, 2017 by title only for its third final reading.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 31, 2017, introduced by Councilman Traffus, Frondor, Bicker, Crannick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with the Board of Education of Parma City School District of Parma, Ohio, to provide transportation for 2017 summer day camp field trips. Said agreement shall terminate August 31st, 2017, and authorizing an amount not to exceed $4,500 for said service.
Amended ordinance number 31, 2017, has been read for its third and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Crannick.
I move that we pass amended ordinance number 31, 2017.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 31, 2017 has passed. Moving on to amended ordinance number 36, 2017.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read amended ordinance number 36, 2017, for its second and final reading and declaring an emergency.
I second a motion. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 36, 2017, introduced by Councilman Traffus, Frondor, Crannick, Bicker, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance to amend appropriations of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the year ending December 31st, 2017, and declaring an emergency.
Amended ordinance number 36, 2017, has been read for its second and final reading. Is there a motion?
Uh, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I move that we pass ordinance, amended ordinance, number 36, 2017.
I second a motion. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I would, I would just like to announce to the Seven Hills community that this balanced budget, this is a balanced budget, and we are seeing a rather healthy surplus that we haven't seen in many years.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 36, 2017 has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 37, 2017.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that council suspends the rules under the charter and reads ordinance 37, 2017, by title only for its final reading.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 37, 2017, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Traffus, Frondor, Bicker, Crannick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a collective bargaining agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Ohio Council 8 and Local 3557 Service, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO, for the purpose of memorializing wage negotiations with various city employees, and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 37, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
Move that council passes ordinance 37, 2017.
I second.
Is there any discussion?
Uh, I have a comment.
Councilman Frondor.
Yes, I'd just like to acknowledge three members of the Service Department that were part of their negotiating team, Mike Vanno, Frank Frost, and Tom Sek. The meetings were very professionally held. There was a good exchange of information, thoughts, and ideas. And I'd also like to acknowledge the input and hard work of Will Noel, who is the AFSP representative for the Service Department, or for the Service Department Union.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? I'd just like to mention that both Councilman Frondor and Law Director Pignatello handled this union negotiation and are handling the others. And I know how much time and effort you're putting into that. It's appreciated. Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 37, 2017 has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 38, 2017. I'll move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance number 38, 2017, by title only for its first and final reading.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 38, 2017, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Traffus, Frondor, Bicker, Crannick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance enacting new chapter 1543 entitled Wage Enforcement, as contained in Part 15 Taxation Code of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of establishing guidelines for wage enforcement and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 38, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading, and I will make a motion to pass ordinance number 38, 2017.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Just like to say that I'm particularly happy about this ordinance. This is to help the city put guidelines in effect to collect income tax from workers, temporary workers in Seven Hills, and we're anticipating hundreds of them with this Rock Side Road project. So this is just one item that helps us collect our revenue that's due to the city. I want to thank the law director as well for helping with this ordinance too. With that, please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 38, 2017 has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 39, 2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance number 39, 2017, for its first and final reading and declaring an emergency.
Second a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Law Director.
I said an emergency.
No, yeah.
Yep. Oh, I have to add it first?
Yeah.
Oh, I have to amend it first?
You move to amend it and wait 24-hour rule for the delivery of the attached agreement, which is changed.
Okay, so I start over here?
Please.
Okay, Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I'd like to suspend the rules under the charter and amend, or actually, I just want to amend ordinance number 39, 2017, to attach the agreement and add the emergency.
Wait 24.
And wait 24 hours.
Is there a second?
I'll second a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Oh, um, lost my train of thought, sorry. Ordinance number 39, 2017, has been amended. Is there a further motion?
Yes.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read amended ordinance number 39, 2017, for its first and final reading and declaring an emergency.
I'll second a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 39, 2017, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Traffus, Frondor, Bicker, Crannick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an economic development job creation and job retention agreement with 4141 Alliance LLC, and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 30, amended ordinance number 39, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we pass amended ordinance number 39, 2017.
Say that, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Um, I would like to say I'm pretty excited about this ordinance as well. This is an agreement with a company on Lombardo Center Drive, and this company will be generating quite a bit of cash to the city once they move in come this November. It's a great deal for Seven Hills, and welcome to this new company. Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 39, 2017 has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 40, 2017.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I, um, I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and amend ordinance number 40, 2017, by adding an emergency.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 40, 2017, has been amended to add the emergency clause. Is there a further motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read amended ordinance number 40, 2017, for its first and final reading and declaring an emergency.
I second a motion.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 40, 2017, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Traffus, Frondor, Bicker, Crannick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance to appropriate a sum not to exceed $65,606.50 plus delivery charge for the purchase of one 2017 Ford F-450 utility truck, two-wheel drive crew cab with standard equipment with appurtenances for use in the sewer department of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio. Said purchase to be made from Valley Truck Centers of Cleveland, Ohio, through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services Contract Number RS-901017, and declaring an emergency.
Amended ordinance number 40, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I move that we pass amended ordinance number 40, 2017.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 40, 2017 has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 41, 2017.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
Make a motion to add the emergency clause to ordinance 41, 2017.
Councilman Kukrow. Oh, second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 41, 2017, has been amended to add the emergency clause. Is there a further motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that council suspends the rules under the charter and reads amended ordinance 41, 2017, by title only for its final reading.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 41, 2017, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Traffus, Frondor, Bicker, Crannick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance to appropriate a sum not to exceed $40,892 plus delivery charge for the purchase of one 2017 Ford full-size cargo van with standard equipment with appurtenances for use in the sewer department of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio. Said purchase to be made from Valley Ford Truck Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services Contract Number RS-901017.
Amended ordinance.
And declaring an emergency.
Amended ordinance number 41, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
Council passes ordinance 41, 2017.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 41, 2017 has passed. Moving on to resolution number 5, 2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read resolution number 5-2017,
five dash twenty seventeen by title only for its first and final reading.
I second a motion. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treifus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Resolution number five, two thousand seventeen, introduced by Mayor Delaculla and Councilman Treifus, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro. A resolution ratifying four hundred six hours of voluntarily donated sick leave units by Seven Hill City employees to Teresa Francis, and declaring an emergency.
Resolution number five, two thousand seventeen, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiatah.
I move that we adopt resolution number five dash twenty seventeen.
I second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treifus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Resolution number five, two thousand seventeen, has been adopted. Moving on to resolution number six, two thousand seventeen.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kranek.
I move that the council suspends the rules under the charter and reads resolution number six, two thousand seventeen, by title only for its first and final reading.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treifus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Resolution number six, two thousand seventeen, introduced by Mayor Delaculla and Councilperson Treifus, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro. A resolution establishing, authorizing, and ratifying procedures for hearing of petition of the Council of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, in reference to the petition for removal of Thomas Jarros, respondent, from the City of Seven Hills Planning Commission, and declaring an emergency.
Resolution number six, two thousand seventeen, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Kranek.
I move that we we adopt resolution number six, two thousand seventeen.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Kranek.
Yes, my preference, since this was up for a first reading, uh, my preference was that uh we just go with the first reading. I have been informed by the legal people that by passing it now as an emergency, it will allow uh Mr. Jarros more time to prepare what a situation he has to prepare for. So out of fairness to him, I agreed that we should pass this as an emergency.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treifus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Resolution number six, two thousand seventeen, has been adopted. Council will now be open to the audience. If you have any comments, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Tom Jarres, two-two-four Crescent Ridge Drive, Seven Hills, Ohio, USA. Nice job, guys. I'd like to see the family hanging together. Tony, you even jumped in there. Uh, for those who don't know the whole story on Tom Jarres, Planning Commissioner. January twenty-ninth, I made a post on Facebook, on YouTube, actually, and I stated that this council violated Seven Hills law when they passed a pre-development application, approved it. Uh, I stand by that statement. The application was deficient. You all knew it was deficient. The Planning Commission knew it was deficient when they had it. And then they sent it to you guys, and I particularly announced to Councilman Treifus, it's not all there. Uh, on February second, Councilman Treifus, Frondor, and Kukral decided to post on Facebook pages under their control that council was not allowed to talk to Planning Commissioner Tom Jarres. I didn't have a question before him. I don't know why exactly that post was made other than to cast some kind of aspersions on my character. And it was vague enough that I had people asking me, what's this about? And I said, I didn't know because I hadn't seen the allegation until it showed up on your Facebook pages. And since then, we've just gone downhill. And then I got suspended, I thought. And then you're forcing a removal. The real knee-slapper in this whole deal, guys, in Seven Hills, to be a mayoral appointee, you are appointed by the mayor, approved by the council, and then according to ordinance and Planning Commission's position, you're paid twenty-five bucks a month. I never got a dime. You didn't cement the employer-employee relationship. So I couldn't resign. I can't quit. I never was a planning commissioner because you guys didn't follow through on your end of the deal. Has to be there. We heard the mayor just bring this up lately about your financial advisory. You gotta pay those guys something that's makes them an employee. You never did it. So there isn't gonna be a hearing. Can't remove me. I never was. I can't resign. And you gentlemen can go to your Facebook pages and make a retraction about any statement regarding Tom Jarres, Planning Commissioner. We got a nice front-page story, Planning Commissioner Tom Jarres suspended. Mr. Holand did that one, or his editors did. This is all great stuff. And it was all wrong. And it might even be subject to law that applies to libel and slander, and who knows? But since nobody bothered to check if you ever followed through, I got smeared through this deal. So I don't want to hear any more mention of Planning Commissioner Tom Jarres, because he never was. Your fault. Period. And I don't want to hear any more garbage about you can't talk to me. I have a right as a citizen to converse with my representatives. So I never was. All the bets are off. The witch hunt's over. I'll definitely want to see how much this cost. This is gonna be good. Because I just found out I was never paid. I didn't realize. Only looking for the money. There is none. So another one of your knee jerks and your insulted democracy with resolution six was all for naught. And I will want to see the retractions, guys. Thank you.
Just for council's clarification, um, Mr. Jarres never turned in his paperwork until nearly a month ago regarding payroll. That is documented by our finance department. And it is my understanding that the paperwork is in process. Anybody further?
That's why.
Anybody further?
If you know the why.
Anybody further? Okay. Uh, reports and communications from the mayor and safety director, Mayor Delaculla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I I just have a few comments about ordinance thirty-six, twenty seventeen, the amended budget for twenty seventeen. I want to first of all acknowledge the hard work of everybody here on the dais, um, as well as our directors. This was a uh, a ton of work, basically, since the final months of twenty sixteen, um, to assemble the budget that has been passed this evening, the amendment to the budget. As you know, in accordance with state law, the city ordinarily operates on a temporary budget based on estimated expenditures for the first three months of every new fiscal year or until April first. By that date, an original appropriation is passed by council for the entire year after considering anticipated expenditures for the upcoming year. The appropriations can be and typically are revised as necessary throughout the year based on unforeseen changes that come along. As you know, the administration attempted to meet a request to prepare a draft budget early in twenty seventeen before all the twenty sixteen final numbers were in, and the twenty sixteen books were reconciled and closed. We presented a rough discussion draft of estimated amounts. Preparing that rough draft was further complicated by the fact that Seven Hills has had no appointed finance director since February of twenty sixteen. After budget meetings with council, a proposal was submitted, uh, and with some later modifications, uh, became ordinance thirty-six, twenty seventeen, which was passed this evening. Um, there are still some coming amendments, as we all know, as I mentioned at the council caucus uh last week, and just very briefly, let me enumerate some of those. The former police chief's severance pay has already been completely paid out, um, which will be, or has already been paid in the middle of five figures, uh, but not reflected in this appropriation. Police overtime is budgeted uh much lower than the chief's estimate, at least by thirty thousand dollars and perhaps more. It should be noted that police overtime consists of many things besides just regular overtime pay. This includes training pay, extended call compensation, grant-funded, reimbursable, OVI patrols, mayor's court duty, uh, SWAT team member costs to patrolmen. Some overtime costs can be reduced by signing some SWAT training days without using overtime when staffing permits that, but with only fifteen officers, it won't make any difference to the bottom line. We know, we now know that the overtime expense will be even higher because the department is about to transfer one of its uniformed officers to the detective bureau, which will place additional overtime demands on the police budget to keep officers on the road. Police overtime is impossible to reduce at current staffing levels and will probably be even higher than the chief's eighty thousand estimate by the end of twenty seventeen unless more officers are hired. And that is, as you know, in process now with uh testing being uh hopefully permitted. We now also know the university hospital has asked that the Civic Drive sign be repaired as part of their lease renewal at the recreation center. Um, and that will be um in the high four-figure, low-figure, uh, low-five-figure range depending on whether there's any contribution from the hospital. And just these three known items alone total an additional unappropriated general fund expense uh in excess of one hundred thousand dollars, but there's more. The twenty seventeen road program council's been working on reflects at page eight of the budget an appropriation of zero dollars, with one hundred eighty-four thousand dollars in engineering expenses to be housed in a currently unfunded and as uh unfunded fund as an unanticipated obligation, uh, but no expenses incurred to date. The city just cut its debt significantly in twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen, and our residents just passed a huge tax increase. The general obligation bond debt was reduced from just over fifteen million dollars at the beginning of twenty fi- twenty fifteen to just over twelve million dollars at the end of twenty sixteen. Capital improvement notes were reduced from about three point two million to about two point six million, with a lot of that money coming from cell phone tower proceeds. This represents a total bond and note debt reduction of between three and a half to four million dollars in just two years, or roughly about twenty percent of the city's total bond and note obligation. The refuse levy will be up for renewal in twenty eighteen. If that levy fails, the city will return to the financial condition it faced before the twenty sixteen tax increases. Borrowing millions of dollars more at this time for any reason is too risky and will eat away at the city's borrowing limit at the very worst time possible. Then there's the whole issue of creating a reserve fund for compensated absences, particularly in the police department. The compensated at absence time currently accumulated there by just one patrol officer is in the six-figure range. There is no fund budgeted to carry this reserve, and it therefore exists as a known but unappropriated general fund liability. Council should establish a separate fund and begin to transfer general fund money into it to cover this known obligation, and I would hope and anticipate that this will occur in the remainder of twenty seventeen uh as an appropriation amendment. Look, the reality is that every budget is just an estimate of future income and expenses. For example, the city brought in more last year in unanticipated income tax and estate tax dollars. The twenty fifteen general fund actual expenses were uh nine million, seventy-three thousand dollars. Last year in twenty sixteen, the general fund expenses went up to nine million, two hundred, eighty-eight thousand uh dollars. The lesson is that no one on this dais has a crystal ball. And we all know that future amendments of this appropriation will be required by the end of twenty seventeen to meet all the unexpected things that will happen over the rest of the year. As I said, I will be signing this legislation so that the city will be in compliance with state law. However, everyone should be aware that just like every year, this budget is not the final word on what the actual city expenses will be at the end of twenty seventeen. These budgets are really works in progress until the final year bud- uh budget numbers are in. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Delaculla. Uh, reports from the directors of departments and other officials. Director of Law, Richard Pignatello. Director of Public Services and Properties, Stuart Levis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, a special thanks to custodian Todd Steinman. He's been like a one-man army renovating the police department, including wallpaper removal, which is not easy, and painting most of the rooms in that area. They haven't been painted and the ones he's painting, nobody knows when they've been painted. Maybe nineteen eighty-five when this building was turned into a city hall. So he's been doing that work diligently along with his other tasks as a custodian. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. City engineer, Dan Collins.
I have no report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, council miscellaneous. Um, I'm gonna start off with a couple things regarding the budget. Uh, first of all, I'm very proud of this budget. I think this was a team effort between the council, the administration, and our residents. We would not have been able to get to where we are today without all three groups working together. Um, this two thousand seventeen budget does not account for a number of revenues that are, have not been mentioned. Blue Chip, the new company on Rockside, opened their doors a week ago. The new income tax that will be collected from that company is not in this budget. The revenue from the construction jobs on Rockside Road are not accounted for in this budget. Um, and the regularly scheduled income tax collections are also budgeted very low according to our uh deputy finance director. Now regarding the police overtime, we are still waiting for uh details of that from our police chief, which we requested a couple months ago, and there's certainly no slate at the police chief. He is transitioning into the new job and doing a great job at it, but that additional detail should be coming soon. The Broadview Road sign at Civic Drive is a very small expense. Could be ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars tops. That does very little to our bot- our bottom line. Regarding the two thousand seventeen road program, when we borrow the three million dollars, payments are not going to be made until two thousand eighteen. That is not accounted for in the two thousand seventeen budget. Now as far as the upcoming November refuse uh renewal levy, that, I'm sorry, that's uh in November of twenty seventeen, and currently, I believe it's at a three point eight mil levy, and we had previous discussions about decreasing that millage to, I think, two point nine, if memory serves correctly. If we put that on the ballot and it passes, the ex- the amount that residents pay will decrease by fifty-one dollars for every hundred fifty thousand dollar valuation of a home. Now, if that levy fails, I can only speak for myself, but it is my intention not to spend one penny of city money to pick up garbage. Residents vote against the levy, then it's on the residents to contract themselves to pick up garbage. I will fight tooth and nail to spend general fund money to pick up residents' garbage. It's a service that needs to be paid for. Residents want that garbage picked up, vote for the levy. They don't, you're on your own. So I I don't think that's a consideration at all. My point is, this budget is very good and frankly conservative, in my opinion. There's a lot of new revenues that will be coming in that are not appropriated for, and we are in great shape financially. And I'm very proud of all the work that everybody has done to get to the city where it is right now. Uh, Councilman Frondor.
Thank you. I I have a few um, few comments to say about the budget as well. Number one, um, here's the difference that, you know, I think, and I've spent a lot of time, I worked glove-in-hand with our deputy finance director. We had two budget hearings that were held on Saturdays. We had every department head in providing uh their wish list of um the budget. And we, we made um adjustments at that time. We made adjustments after those meetings. Um, and again, you know, Joe Hotchkiss and I worked very, very closely. Uh, you know, if if anyone can say they're intimate with the budget, I would say I'm intimate with our, our current budget. Now the difference is, this is, this is how an optimist sees things. They see opportunity. A pessimist sees nothing but roadblocks. And what I'm hearing tonight is nothing but roadblocks. Let me tell you why, why that is. Number one, as Mr. Treifus has mentioned, our income tax was um underestimated very, very conservatively, and that was done on purpose. And that was, that was something that our deputy finance director insisted that he do. He said, you don't know what it is, so we're going to, we're going to grossly underestimate, he'd rather err on the side of conservative rather than being, being overly optimistic. Okay, I get that, and that's fine. So that's what we did. Second of all, um, the mayor mentioned the police chief's severance. The mayor mentioned police overtime, and he mentioned that uh this is going to be, and then there's a, there's some general fund liabilities that are going to be in the six-figure range. Well, let me tell you, let me tell you where the budget currently stands. We are, we are north of three hundred thousand to the good. Three hundred thousand. So if we take that hundred thousand dollars that the mayor is talking about, um, we're still two hundred thousand, we're north of two hundred thousand to the good. We haven't been there in probably ten years, other than by artificial means, which were, was selling uh city assets and refinancing our debt. And all we did was, was push that debt further out, and we increased it. So this, this is a truly balanced budget. Uh, secondly, if we were to take this uh general fund liability of, of one police officer who said, you know, if he cashed out tomorrow, be in the six-figure range, well, guess what? We're still to the good. We're still to the good. Now remember, that's with a conservative income tax estimate, and that's without um accounting for taxes that we're going to receive on the, from Blue Chip and, and people that are working on this uh Rockside Road project. So if anybody has any financial um background or understands finances, yeah, I I agree with you, mayor. This is, this is a working document. But, you know, I look at this money as, as if it were mine. I manage it that closely as if it were mine. And there's no way that I'm gonna put this city in any kind of jeopardy. As a matter of fact, when we talk about road programs, uh, Matt Treifus and I did an analysis of what the city could afford. We can easily afford three hundred, or three million dollar We can easily afford three hundred, or three million dollar, uh, road programs. Matter of fact, we could, we could afford a five million dollar program, and we wouldn't break the bank. So when I hear, when I hear things like this, it, it absolutely drives me crazy. When we talk about a rough draft, you know, the, the mayor says, well, you know, we haven't, we don't have a, uh, we haven't had a finance director. Let me tell you, Joe Hotchkiss has done a yeoman's job as, I would say, acting finance director. He's done a great job. He's always available. He answered all of my questions. I can't tell you the number of times that we sat down together in his little conference room in the finance department, went through this thing line by line by line, and if I had any questions, he investigated it. Let's also talk about the pessimists of the, the, I'm, I'm reading now the, uh, for those of you that were here last Monday, I said, well, the mayor, Mr. Mayor, you submitted a budget. Oh, he says, no, I didn't submit a budget. Well, I got this off of our website. It says the mayor's budget submission. That's, that's where it is. You click on it, and then there's a cover letter. In the cover letter, he says, uh, let's see, we're in the midst of collective bargaining negotiations with the union, which is another, another hidden cost that our pessimist sees as a roadblock. Here's, here's a guy that hasn't been involved one second of the negotiations, has no clue to where we're going with our unions, and yet he makes these bold and blind statements about the roadblocks ahead. And I, and I'll be quite honest with you, mayor, you could, my personal feeling, you couldn't navigate the budget with, with Joe Hotchkiss holding you by the hand and a GPS in the other. So don't tell me about, about how, how we should be worried about where this, where this city is headed. It's headed in the right direction, and make no mistake about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Petro.
Mr. Chairman, I have no miscellaneous.
Councilman Kukral?
Uh, nothing.
Councilman Kranek?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker?
No comment.
Councilman Biassietta?
Nothing, Mr. President.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Biassietta.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treifus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
You can adjourn.
No one, that information went in. You know, you're lying, and I had someone here when I brought it last year. You're a pathological liar. Yeah, thanks. Yahoo. Yeah. I'm calling fire. Oh. Jack, do you want?
Frank? I think you need to...
I think I just heard him say, I've never been.
You should get it, get that typed up and off. We can do that at the time.
I have that touchy.
I don't know what's better.
I think you need to...
I think you need to...
Move me.
Sort of hemlock.
Coming along.